All right. Good evening, everybody. And I am, is seven o'clock and I call the meeting of the Plymouth School Committee to order. If everyone would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. It's so weird getting used to everybody being here again, but this is great. Thank you. Okay, first thing that we're gonna, on the agenda, we, we are sad to say that we've had, we'd like to have a moment of silence. Margaret Campo, or Peg as she was known, was a nurse educator at Manhamet Elementary School for over ten years. And prior to that, she was a visiting nurse for twenty-eight years. And unfortunately, she passed away. And if everyone could please just join me in saying a moment of silence for Peg Campo. Thank you. All right, I think we are gonna just switch things really quickly. We're still waiting for... Oh, do we, do we have any, anyone from the community? Okay, so we'll take any, if there's any community members here that would like to speak before the school committee, please let us know. No? I'm looking at everybody's faces. All right, so we're gonna, I'm just gonna go switch things. It shouldn't take too, too long. We're waiting for someone to come. So we are going to go ahead and start with our high school representatives. So first of all, we're going to introduce our, our new reps. We've got Adam Halperin, welcome, from Plymouth North High School. And Maggie Ladd, also Plymouth North. And Christopher Monroy, is that how I pronounce that right? And Ben Jaeger is not here today from the South as well? Oh, good, all right, well, we wish him well in his tennis meeting today. Awesome, okay, oof, that's a long way. So welcome, and we hope that you enjoy serving on the school committee with us. Please do not be shy. If you wanna contribute, if you have anything to add, if you have anything that you want put on the agenda or discuss, please let us know. And we, we enjoy having you here, and you're the reason we're here, so please feel free to contribute as much as you can, okay? So with that being said, we'll get started. We're gonna start with Plymouth North. Do you guys wanna go ahead and give us your update?
Yeah, so obviously, school ended today, so everyone's officially out of school. And then, like, summer work's been posted for everyone, and you should got emails from your teachers. And then, we do have sports that are still continuing to play. I know softball for sure is moving on in the state tournament. And I know that baseball, boys tennis, and girls lacrosse all played today. I'm not sure how they ended up, like, winning or losing, but I wish them luck. I hope they did the best. That's the only update I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Christopher.
Okay, so first, I'd just like to give an update for all summer work. You can find it on the school websites. And then, I also have like a little speech that I'd like to prepare.
Absolutely.
I'd like to give a big congratulations to all the students in our Plymouth Schools for today was technically our last day of the 2020 through 2021 school year. If this year has taught us anything about the amazing students at South and North, is that besides the amazing talent and potential held by each student, there's also a tremendous amount of resilience and hope. The school year was unlike any other before and tested everyone's own strength and patience, but now it's over. A year primarily composed of Google meets, Google classroom assignments, and separation has concluded. Now, as a collected, a collective united by this long and arduous experience, we can look forward to the future. The 2021 through 2022 school year is on its way, and thankfully, knock on wood, normalcy has returned. I look forward to this coming year and what is in store. So thank you to the school committee for being the guiding hand in this process. Thank you to the teachers, staff, and administrators for helping maintain and create a sense of peace. And thank you and congratulations to the students who have left to achieve their dreams and those who are just joining us. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you to both of you. Does anybody have anything that they wanna add or ask the students? No? Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Enjoy your summer. All right, so I think we could probably get started in the beginning of those until Matt gets here, correct? Okay, all right, so now we have a special recognition. Mrs. Burgess, if you'd like to come to the table, that would be great. You wanna come up to the table and we can start?
It's not easy for me either.
It's my honor to present you with this flag as a token of our appreciation for your dedication to public schools and students of Plymouth. You've served on the Plymouth School Committee for twenty-four years?
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years.
Yep.
But I know personally, as you, your dedication to the Plymouth students, every community started long before that. Personally, and I think many people might know this, I benefited from your wisdom as far back as my high school years with your involvement in exchange programs and former students that have spent time in Plymouth as well as those of us, including me, that study abroad. So I know that you and I go back even further than that. And your dedication to the students back then was amazing, so thank you so much. Since serving on the school committee with you, I've personally had the privilege of learning from your experiences and your knowledge that you've acquired over the years. And I specifically have great memories of tomorrow in New Orleans with you and Bourbon Street with you and Dr. Swanson. And your involvement from the get-go with the program, our sister city program, Shishikahama, would not be what it is today without you. So, but I don't wanna be the only one to speak about my experiences. And a few of our other members would like to say a few words. So I know I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Badger, and then if anybody else wants to raise their hands and turn, I will, I will let everybody go ahead and speak.
I just wanna thank you for biding my heart for all you've done for the children of Plymouth for every, you know, I was doing when we first started serving on the school committee. So I think, thank you for that. Thank you for your guidance. I mean, from the minute I said that I was gonna run for school committee, you were there to answer any questions accordingly, so I really appreciate that. And all of like Kim said, Ms. Hunt said, I mean, they say, God, sorry.
That's all right, yeah, but she just had the hunt signs out, so.
You know, the, that you have your level of warmth and your guidance and the historical perspective that you bring to everything. It was very much appreciated and really helped.
Thanks.
Way more, I would be way more thankful, looking to be someone for everything.
And then we can go around. I don't know who else wants to go first.
You can sit here.
Margie, I just wanna thank you for welcoming me when I was the newest committee member. I also wanna thank you for your advocacy that you've had in terms of children who are marginalized. Not only that, but the advocacy in, in terms of bringing the arts program to the school. So thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Margie, I just wanted to thank you for instantly making me feel like part of the group. We only got to serve together for a few months, but the first day I met you, you made me feel like I was already, you know, like I belonged here, so I thank you and thank you for all you did over the years.
I served a long time with you, Margie.
Yes.
Most of it good?
Most of it.
Let me, let me share with the committee a story about, about, about you and I. You know, we, as we know, we all know, Margie went through a surgery a year or so ago, and the recovery didn't go well. In fact, she was, she was so eager to get on her feet and get moving again, but they, the doctors wouldn't let her go. So I needed her on a committee. So I went to the convalescent home. I pulled her out of her room. I said, "Margie, you've got to serve on this committee." This was this screening committee for the superintendent. And you know what she said? "Of course I will." That's Margie Burgess from soup to nuts.
I'll just say thank you for your service, and when I first got elected in two thousand nine, you reached out to me beforehand. We had met before at another event, and you'll be missed. We agree more than we disagreed, and thank you for your service, not only to the district, but to the students.
Yeah, thank you. So, Mrs. Burgess, I've known you since two thousand eight. You were on my original screening committee.
I know.
Thank you for providing me the opportunity to come here. But you, all I can say is, you are a true advocate for all kids. And everything that you've done, everything you've served for, every decision you've made has been in the best interest of all children. And I just wanna thank you for everything that you've done for me personally, but more importantly, for the children, the thousands and upon thousands of children in this school district. So thank you very much.
All right, so we're not done yet. And I think we can just start.
Yep.
So you might notice we have some legislators here today with us. We're expecting... Right on cue, you're on.
I know who you are. I know this guy too.
Hi, Stephen Exaros, nice to meet you.
I know who you are.
Everyone knows.
But he is, but he's very active down in that area, and that area is not so active.
No, I know.
So I think it's great.
We're gonna make it active.
I think it's great.
Hard to keep up with them.
So Margie, our legislators are here today. They're gonna give us an update after about what's going on, but they're, they're here for you as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to Matt, and you can pick the ball away.
Can I just say, we have a request to do the presentation on the run from...
Oh, okay, so I'm just...
From our media personnel.
I'm gonna turn it over to you guys.
Thank you.
Would you like to, Margie, over here? Margie, if you're comfortable there, you can stand there.
Whichever they want.
Sure.
So I'm gonna have Matt start, because you've known her the longest.
So we're really thrilled to be here tonight, and I'm so glad. Thank you to the school committee, the administration, for actually having a day for Margie. I've known Margie for a number of years, and, you know, she's, she's one of the hardest working people that you'll see in government. And she has been for so many years. She's been advocate for so many different things over the years. And I'm just so happy for, for calling you tonight, and we have some citations that we wanna present. So I think we'll start with the House one first.
And I just say one thing about Margie that I learned over the past, I think, four years ago I was introduced to Margie. She wipes her hamburgers practically away. You don't even have to cook the burgers. I just wanted to throw that in.
I just wanna say one thing, now that you mention that. So I think it was twenty ten, we went to Shishikahama, Japan, right? And Margie actually, she put it all together, and it's amazing what she had to do. I think some of you in this room may have gone through that. And it's amazing putting it together. And we took taxicabs, automobiles, trains, planes, anything you could think of, and I think it was two days later we got there. But it was really, it was well done. It was, it was phenomenal for the time because there were so many people going. And that was the purpose of it, because we're spending the taxpayer's money, so she's very conscious of that. But it was an awesome trip, and we thank you for putting that together.
Oh, I thought that was fun. So I want to start with this. So this is a citation from the House of Representatives. "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all of us, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers with sincere congratulations to Margie C. Burgess in recognition of your extraordinary dedication to children's education and appreciation of your twenty-three-year commitment to serving on the Plymouth School Committee. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all their endeavors. And it's given the twenty-first day of June, twenty twenty-one. And it's signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, your State Representative, Matthew Torri, your State Representative, Stephen Exaros, and myself, Kathy Lanatra. So I just wanted to present you with this.
Well, I have to say, I have a special place in my heart for educators. My daughter taught fourth grade, and I fully understand that it takes a village, a committee, teachers, administrators, and, and people who really are dedicated to education and the town to go to the extent and to have the legacy that you do. I just wanna say on behalf of the state and being a Plymouth senator that we're so lucky that you were part of us and our children's growing up, so. And let me read the formal citation from the Commonwealth of Mass, State Senate. "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Margie Burgess in recognition of your twenty-three years of dedicated service and leadership as a member of the Plymouth School Committee. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes and wishes for continued success." With this citation, we do assign to the President of the Senate and protested to, and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by Karen Eastfilka, the President of the Senate, Michael Hurley, the Clerk of the Senate, myself, Susan L. Moran, State Senator.
Wow, to be with a senator, two state representatives, and you, this is the best part. I'm Stephen Exaros, I'm a rookie. I just started as a state representative five months ago. But I spent forty years in policing in the army, from a summer cop with a full head of hair back in the seventies to the deputy chief. And part of my service was a school resource officer. And I love that. For seven years, I was the first one on the case back in the eighties. And now it's part of life, and it's all about service before self. You've lived that every day. Think of the lives that you've touched. They'll always remember. And you need to keep serving as you move forward. Yes, because you have a lot to offer. Wherever you choose. And then one last thing, I don't have any citations, because they have it all. But I do have something special. When my son went off to war, Nicholas, he was a Marine, and we lost him in Afghanistan. But when he got on that bus to go to the plains to go to war, someone was standing there, a veteran. And they had cut out a star from a worn American flag, and they gave it to him and said, "Thank you for your service. Don't forget where you come from." So I cut out a star, and I want you to have it. And, and Margie, I know you're a member of the Rotary Club, too. We all, and we both are, and it's always service enough, so that's what we've learned to get back to the community. So I'm so honored to be here with you. I have a, we all have a citation from the Governor's Office. So this is the Commonwealth of Mass, given to Margie Burgess on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Mass. I am pleased to confer upon you this fell the citation, recognition of your commitment to children and your dedicated service as members of the Plymouth School Committee since nineteen ninety-eight, signed by Karen Filio, Lieutenant Governor, and Charles D. Bay, Governor. Congratulations.
Well, I do.
I know you would.
Because this is not what I expected. I expected a, probably a thing of flowers and, and great to know you. And I, I'm so happy that I did serve for the Plymouth Public Schools, I hope, in some respect. Well, I'm still on the diversity committee, so I'm still there, but, but I, I really, all my life, have given for children. That was my main thing, whether it be Shishikahama or take kids or send kids, but it doesn't matter which, which way we do it. Everything I've ever done was kids, because my mother had three hundred and fifty-four foster kids through all my life, and I helped. I never knew not to. I knew how to do selectance meetings and come before anybody else, because my mother used to drag me down so she could do get Memorial Hall for the free roller skating board. I was a little bit, and I was here, so it was part of this room to ask them out. So, yeah, it's, I don't know. I just overwhelmed, that's all I can say. I never expected all of this, and, and everybody's so good to me, and I'm very, very appreciative. And if there's ever anything you need, you can call me. And, you know, that's just, that's all I can say, okay, so I'm just overwhelmed right now.
Margie, we didn't, we didn't show you this.
We mentioned this before, but we didn't read it all, so Michelle and I think, or Ms. Badger, I think we should read it to you. And you know this is made by the students. This is Margie Burgess, in recognition of your dedication, commitment, and service in public schools as a member of the Plymouth School Committee from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and twenty-one. We need some friends.
Can I have you scooch just a little bit? Thank you so much. That's great. Congratulations.
That's beautiful. Yeah, that really is. Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I'm not gonna get all the stuff, but yeah.
I heard, and I thought it was gonna be.
What was the next thing we were gonna do?
Legislative update?
Yeah, yeah, just with that.
Okay, so next, we're, we're going to, before you can leave, we're gonna just take advantage of having all of our representatives here today. I, I think a lot of you might know that when I, one of my commitments was try to keep more in contact, have more communication, get more input from all of you. I know that I've met with all of you individually, and recently, we had our MASC legislative conference, and you all, or representatives from your office, all attended, and it was great. And in that meeting, we, we said, "Okay, we're gonna call on you again soon," and I think that your, your representatives that were there said, "Anytime after June first, so welcome." So, you know, I think, I think that we wanna have a great relationship. There's been so much that's gone on this year. So much that we can advocate for instead of just having our meetings. So, you know, if you, if you all would like to maybe introduce yourselves and then just give us a, an update of what's going on, what we can do to help you, what you can do to help us, and then if anybody has any questions, if you'd be, entertain us with answering some questions. That'd be great.
Sure. I am Senator Moran. I'm the Plymouth Barnstable State Senator. I cover three towns on either side of the canal, Plymouth, Pembroke, Kingston, as well as Falmouth, Bourne, and Sandwich. And this, I've been doing government for a while. This is the absolute best job I have ever had. I mentioned I have a particular interest in education. I really appreciate Kim reaching out. Not all the school committees have been, you know, that active in, in really coming sort of to the, to the top of our attention, and I really appreciate that. So I have a quick presentation about what we've been doing in the Senate. And when you're ready, I'll, I'll go ahead with that and be happy to answer questions at any point.
Yep, absolutely. If you wanna go first, and then we'll just go down...
Sure, okay.
That would be great.
Terrific. Well, on Chapter Seventy, and most of you probably already know this, but this is sort of an overview. We'll receive five point five oh three billion dollars, which is an increase of two hundred and nineteen point six million from the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year, fully funding the first year of the Student Opportunity Act. That's a forty million dollar fund will stabilize schools who attendance rates had been impacted by COVID. Unrestricted general government aid is set at one point sixteen billion, an increase of thirty-nine point five million from the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year. Schools in my district are scheduled to receive seventy-two million, three hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred seventy-seven dollars in local educational aid through Chapter Seventy funding. Plymouth will receive twenty-six billion, six hundred seven eighty-seven. Those are B's, sorry, I skipped some zeros there. Additionally, a few pieces of education funding are now in the Joint Conference Committee, where the House and Senate hash out different versions of the budget to create a final version to send to the governor. send to the Governor. I co-sponsored a Senate amendment that will institute a 95% reimbursement rate for special needs school transportation. That funding remains to be determined. I also co-sponsored a Senate amendment that requires that unfunded mandates from the effect of the pandemic on the district's families be taken into account for Chapter 70 funding, and requires that funds be dispersed not later than October 1st, rather than waiting until December to more accurately reflect the reality of the need. I think, Madam Chair, you and I mentioned that in our meeting. With respect to legislation, I've co-sponsored legislation that will improve food security for students. House 714 is an act relative to universal school meals. Senate 349, an act establishing farm-to-school grants to promote healthy eating and strengthen the agricultural economy. I've also sponsored legislation that will improve reimbursement for special education funding and school-based health care. House 669, thanks to Rep. Muratori, an act relative to the reimbursement of school nurses, and House 668, an act relative to special education funding and increasing rates. With respect to the federal stimulus funding, the state will be receiving billions in federal stimulus funds through the American Rescue Plan, some of which will be directed to education. The state legislature recently moved to put the money in a trust, which will mean the money is not going directly to towns and counties, but will be subject to appropriation with certain exceptions. The last quick thing I want to mention is that I'm particularly excited to see, to see the student members of your board, just with respect to civic-minded participation in the town, and for the students to be given such an important voice. I really enjoyed being introduced to all of you. And any questions that I can't answer, I'm sure they will, or I'll get back to you on anything you need research about or you need from our office. Really, call or email at any point in time. I serve you.
Thank you so much.
Does anybody have any?
We serve her.
Does anybody have any questions for Senator Moran at this time, or we could wait till the end, too, if we have any questions? All right. I'm not going to pronounce your name right. So Mr. Exaros, right?
That's close enough.
No, I'm sorry, Representative Exaros.
Oh, that's, there you go. Beautiful.
I watched your live today from Mass Maritime today, too. I commented. I don't know if you saw it, but I did.
Didn't, but what a facility. So I just wanted to quickly say hello, introduce myself, and, you know, the mayor, Matt Muratori, is here, so he can tell more. But I'm just very impressed with Plymouth. You know, I'm a, from New Bedford, born and raised. I worked for the Yarmouth Police for forty years, so I'm from Yarmouth and Barnstable area. But I cover parts of Barnstable, all of Sandwich, parts of Bourne, and one little tiny precinct in Plymouth, Precinct 9, which is beautiful. And I love this job, like Senator Moran said. It's all about service before self. It really is. And we, I think, make a great team because that's how we feel. We try to do good things. So there are over 6,000 bills filed. I filed 25, you know, co-sponsored 250, and I find it fascinating how democracy works. And there are 160 representatives, all from all, you know, types of, all walks of life, which I think is so important. So I'm learning a lot. I love being in the State House. I'm here for you. That's why we reached out to you, to learn your needs. And just know you have a friend that really cares about you. And to your point about the students, it's very special. We fed a lot of people, working with the superintendent. We drove tractor-trailer trucks to Plymouth North High School, working with all of us as volunteers, and handed out, you know, thousands of pounds of food in the middle of a worldwide pandemic. Sometimes the truck was late, and I'm sorry about that, but you guys did a great job. But you know who did it all? The students. And I've done over 250 events in 50 cities and towns, and nobody does it like Plymouth. Nobody had the students doing it. It was really impressive. So that's who I am. I'm here to help. Reach out anytime. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Representative.
We're so happy to have Steve with us. It has been a pleasure working with everyone at this table. I'm Kathy Lenatra. I represent the 12th Plymouth, so I have three precincts here in Plymouth. What do I have? I have one, 11, and 13, and all of Kingston, Plimpton, Halifax, a little part of Middleborough, and a little part of Dexbury. So I have six towns. I do not have favorites, but I will say that Plymouth is the most fun town and the most put together. So I have enjoyed so far being a state representative and serving all of you, and I hope to continue to do it longer. I'm glad that we have this opportunity to meet all of you. And like the Senator said, I want to thank the Senator, too, for her amendments. I wanted to start that first, that we're always, always available to you, whether by phone or by email. And if we cannot find the answer, then we will find that for you. We have the resources to be able to find the answers for your questions. And thank you. Adam, you look so familiar. Were you in that speed thing, what we, what did at the high school? No. No, but anyways, but thank you.
Be careful what you say about speed.
Thank you, Ben. That was a great speech. So kudos to you for giving that. That was wonderful. And I will pass it to my colleague, Representative Muratori.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for inviting us here. I'm Matt Muratori, State Representative for the 1st Plymouth District. That includes all the other precincts that they don't do. It is, it's great to be here. I first want to just start out by thanking all of you, thanking the teachers and the staff and the nurses for really what you've done during this whole pandemic, unprecedented what you've done. And I know you've all been meeting, you know, since, since August in person and doing a lot of good things for town. And a lot of you, you didn't sign up for this, but you took it on. And you took it on, and you took some guff for some of the things you had to do, but you made tough decisions, and I think you made all the right decisions. So on behalf of the community, we thank you for what you, what you have done and what you continue to do. And I also, too, want to recognize the nurses. They're really, you know, I, I think the teachers and staff and all of you are unsung heroes in this whole pandemic, but the nurses have really, we talk about nurses in healthcare facilities, and I have a healthcare background, you know, what, how much heroes they were, but the nurses in the school system, I mean, they have done tremendous job of keeping these kids going. And every time I did the COVID-19 shows, every time I could talk about the schools, I would always say, you know, about the nurses and the kids, how resilient they were. And as adults, we could take lessons from what the kids actually did during this pandemic. To have very little COVID go through the schools and keep the schools going, it's, it's just tremendous. With regard to the Senator, thank you, Senator, for summarizing everything for us. Again, we are here for, for you, to try to help you and guide you, and you need to reach out to us anytime you see something that you need help with. As Representative Zaro says, Exaro says, you know, there's over 6,000 bills, so it's hard for us to kind of track. But if you see something with funding or whatever bill is that you want us to co-sponsor or sponsor something, please let us know. We really want to hear more from the school department about this. I know one thing that we did, I think, Madam Chair, we spoke about, or maybe it was Madam Vice Chair, actually, with regard to the transportation, when Gary Costin was here. We have filed that again this past year. Unfortunately, it didn't go through, and that had to do with transportation for the Plymouth Schools, being the largest community with square, with square miles. We filed a bill that said 95 square miles or more should be part of a regional funding formula for school transportation. We filed two sessions in a row. We will do it again, but we may have to take a different strategy and may need help from, from all of you and maybe, you know, some other groups that can maybe help with this, too. We did have conversations with the House Ways and Means Chair about it. He understood it. Of course, there's going to be more dollars that will have to be associated with it, but it's, it's only the fair thing to do. I think Plymouth is, I think it was number 14, number 15. If you, if you compared them to the other regional school districts in the state, Plymouth is like number 15 out of all 50 or 60 of them that are, that are in Commonwealth. And don't, you don't get the funding for it, but your square miles is worth it to do it. So we'll continue to, to work on that as well. So again, thank you so much for inviting us, having us here, and, you know, please let us know what we can do to help support all of you. But thank you again for all you've done.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody. Does anybody have anything that they want to ask while we're here? No, but we have your emails, and we, oh, wait, Miss Badger, just.
I don't have anything to ask, but I was actually, thank you for bringing it up. But thank you so much for sponsoring that, and hopefully, you know, if we keep at it, we will eventually, you know, people will hear us and listen to us and realize that we are a district that's bigger than some regional school districts. And so it's, it's really important that we, you know, get a little bit of extra assistance. So thank you for keeping with it. Really appreciate it.
Yes. And we know how busy you are, so thank you. I'm sure you're.
I would say, if I may, Madam Chair, one of the things I want to bring up about the Rescue Act, too. I think the, with some of the money coming out, the Plymouth County, I don't know if you know it or not, but Plymouth County Commissioners have actually are going to take a part of that money, like they did the last time for the CARES Act. So there may be things through that that you may be able to go through the county about. So I would, I would ask you to reach out to Treasurer O'Brien to start working on that, what do you need for money out of that. Those are going to be one-time money. I know the Senator brought up about the state that we're going to be looking at the money that we're have, we have in the state for one time. So if you think of anything that could be a one-time fund, either through the state or through the county, that will help you through this, please bring it up, bring it forward to us. There's dollars there.
And I would just add, Madam Chair, to copy us on the, any request to Tom, so that we can stay in the loop.
Yeah.
Sure. I'm sure you all know we've copied you on all of our communications, all of our letters. We've been busy writing letters.
It's helpful. It's very helpful to do that.
Recently, so thank you. And like I said, we know that you're all busy, and I know that some of you are off to another meeting or event, so we appreciate your time. And thank you so much, and we'll see you, we'll do, maybe we'll do this quarterly, or we'll see you again soon. So thank you.
Thank you.
And you picked a good day because we have our nurse present, our health presentation right after you.
My first rodeo.
We knew. You're good at this. You're good at this. Thank you so much, everybody. All right. So next up, this is perfect timing. It's like it was planned, right? We have our program update, and we have Carolyn Rains, who's going to do a presentation on the student health services.
Those weren't too hard acts to follow. I don't know.
Sorry.
That's okay. And I do want to thank Mrs. Burgess for her service, too, and also for the great legislators who have been super supportive of school health services in the district, supporting legislation to support our kids. So they're, they've been awesome.
Thank you.
Do I just?
Nope. She might have. I think we do. She might have, she might have to set it up.
I don't know if I have to wait for her.
Might have had to.
I think she wanted to make. Yeah, one takes your Margie out.
And I also want to thank one of my nurses for being here tonight, Aileen McCarthy, who's a South Elementary nurse who's going to be moving to North High.
Welcome.
All right, okay. So hopefully with my glasses, I'll be able to, to see this. So just to sort of go through, this is a school committee presentation that is probably pretty much unlike a lot of the ones I've done in the past, sharing a lot of data with all of you, of some of the things that have gone on in the school. And I think one of the bigger pieces in talking about what the school nurses are doing, and I think one of the big, big facts this year is that the community collaboration that we've had, not just within the school committee, I mean, the school community, but also with the community at large, to support the, the students. So this is just like a picture of School Nurse Day that we had here, actually in the Mayflower Room. Kathy Lenatra was here, Steve Zaros, Rep. Steve Zaros, and it was really put together. Betty D. Benedectus, who's Matt Muratori's director, helped us put this together, and all of the nurses received great acknowledgements from the House of Representatives. So I think that that was a nice touch, especially for the school year serving during the pandemic. So again, the coordinated school health model, I think, you know, this looks at all facets of the whole child, not just the physical health, which obviously was, of course, of paramount importance this year in supporting learning, did just so many facets of supporting children in schools. So a little bit of the, you know, the typical health conditions that the nurses see in the district. I think this particular school year, obviously infectious diseases seem to hit the top of the list. But otherwise, most of the kids with, you know, serious medical concerns and medical conditions were coming to school still. So I think that's one of the things that the day-to-day care during the hybrid model, the nurses may not have seen as many total health encounters as they usually do. So for example, just to give you an idea, this particular school year, we had 34,242 health office visits total across the district, which is significant. But on average, we have close to 90,000 health office visits a year. So knowing that our half of our population was in school, but we made up for it in other data collections. So I'll get into that in a second. So above and beyond, and looking at some of the things, the nurses, for the most part, in every school, had a health theme every month. And so looking at the top left corner here, this is just about sugary drinks. My school nurse at Hedge Elementary, it was her first year this year, and she did a great job of looking at health equity across the board. Her bulletin boards always were in English and Brazilian Portuguese. She had the support of a fifth grade student who she said she hoped was a good speller because, for the most part, she said she was relying on him. So the kids were very engaged with her. And again, you know, looking at how we could support all families across the district in terms of our communication, so that everybody is as informed. I think one of the pieces with this, too, speaks to some of the infographics that we did supply with our families. Thank you to Emily Goonan, who made everything look really nice. We would send those home as the state and as the Department of Education would update their guidance for us on COVID. My nurses started doing their CPR classes during the school year again with the kids. This is, some of these pictures are of fifth graders and also middle school students doing CPR training, which is something that we have really tried to work on significantly over the last several years in terms of beefing up our medical emergency response planning. The picture of the boxes with one of our health aides who actually took a great initiative and contacted, I think it was Project Warmth, and had 60 coats delivered to South Elementary School. Not all of them were actually given out to kids, but a significant number of them were. Surprisingly, so many kids come to school and they don't have winter clothes. In the bottom left, that was the Hedge school nurse did a coat drive. A lot of local community agencies and churches and individuals contributed to that for kids who didn't have hats, scarves, jackets. So that was also a big success. I believe she at least gave 30 coats away this school year. And in addition, we had one of our elementary nurses work with the Think First program at Boston Children's Hospital. Hedge is a walking school, so that they, she realized that some of the kids were riding their bikes to school without helmets. So they worked with Children's Preventive Ed, Prevention, Preventive Education Program, and they came and they showed the kids how to wear, you know, a helmet correctly and, and how to be safe while riding their bikes. So some non-COVID specific activities. They had a great Project Kindness over at South High that they implemented. A couple of the nurses had their own Healthy Headlines websites that they put up so that they could communicate with their students. They had started doing this last year when we went out in March, and it was very successful. I know that the Chiltonville Congregational Church was very supportive with our food backpack program for PCIS when that was started this year, and every two weeks was donating fresh produce, which was something that we really weren't necessarily getting as much of from the food service program because it just wasn't available. So I know that that was, you know, definitely a big plus. And also, too, you know, the fruits, a lot of the nurses will put fruit baskets out in their office for students to be able to come in and get a healthy snack during the school day. Okay, so COVID-19 was obviously the priority. This was something that we started looking at and working on last summer, actually, in terms of planning for the fall. Pretty significant, looking at the Department of Public Health certainly to advise us in terms of, you know, guidance around what the expectations were going to be with our students and in our classrooms. Never timely enough, working with, they started working a little more closely with the Department of Education, so that, that was helpful. But I feel like, you know, But I feel like, you know, obviously this consumed the 90% of our school day in light of all of the other things that the nurses were doing. So one of the things in Plymouth, I feel like this district has always really truly supported a culture of health across the board. Health Service has always been a very valued department. And this is something that we try to continue to work on. I think our communication with families obviously was much increased this year, educating them around contact tracing, isolation practices. And I'll get into a little bit more of that in a second. But one of the highlights, I think, that most of the nurses talked about is how resilient the kids were, from the very young kids, even last summer. Like Stacy, when we started the summer program, some little special needs kids wearing their masks to school for the summer program in the heat. It's just, just really very, very impressive of how all the kids tried to really obey the rules and do what they needed to do. I think that we certainly strengthened our team approach within the school community as well as the community at large, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute too. And the enhanced community partnerships were just amazing. To see how this community in Plymouth stepped up to support the families. And I think that, you know, contact tracing for students, staff and families was, you know, huge. And even like when we had our Remote Mondays, the nurses would submit their Remote Monday plan to me every Monday morning. And obviously, a significant period of time on that Remote Monday was spent communicating with families, educating them, working with staff. That was also a time when we had our Zoom meetings, which I think obviously were all zoomed out. But a good time for everybody to be able to get together virtually, which is certainly a practice when it's convenient down the road, we'll continue to do. I think we always had very clear lines of communication, which obviously started at the top of the superintendent, which was really important and everybody knew. And, you know, difficult sometimes for nurses working in the educational setting, it's not quite the same as working in an acute care or primary setting. And again, waiting for the guidance from the Department of Education very frequently, you know, and making sure that we were doing the right thing to support our kids and families. The nurses spend a lot of time on the phones. So looking at our communication numbers, and these numbers I pulled on June 1st. So we had over 19,000 communications with families this school year. I think when we're looking at the normal amount of communications we would normally have with families in a school year was around 15,000. So we increased that significantly. And considering that we only had 400, we really only had 400, I don't say only, but we had 487 positive cases in the schools where kids contracted COVID outside the school setting, and six cases that we can say were most likely contracted in the school setting. That still is less than 7% of our student population, which I think really speaks to the families being transparent, communicative, trying to be vigilant in doing the right thing, the nurses being able to do education. And I think so many people think, oh, you know, the state was doing a lot with the contact tracing collaborative. But the contact tracing collaborative, especially when the cases were peaking in the winter, were not able to keep up with the caseload. So if they got a case, by the time they got a positive result, if it had been a few days, they'd never even made phone calls. So I think our school nurses did the majority of that across the state. We actually had started doing that last summer and working very closely with the Director of Public Health. And there was a very large handful of my nurses, including Aileen McCarthy, who would reach out to COVID people in the community with COVID, asking them about the supports that they needed. And there were certainly a lot of elderly individuals. Some of them had lost spouses to COVID, really sad situations to where they had nowhere to get food. And the nurses did a lot in terms of collaborating with different agencies in the community to make sure that they had their needs met, that they had transportation to the doctor or that they were, you know, able to get their needs met during that time. So that was really important and we really appreciated having that opportunity. Our staff communication obviously increased significantly as well. Normally, we have a little over 4,000 communications with staff during the school year. And again, most of those are student-related, obviously. Kids coming to the nurse's office too much, maybe, kids who are having issues with their health, nurses communicating around those types of situations. And, you know, a lot of these additional staff communications were obviously, you know, and nurses in Plymouth do care for teachers as well as they do for the kids. So it was one of those situations where I think that, you know, the staff was also looking at the school nurse as a strong resource. And looking at the community collaborations, I really feel like that was a significant, large number. We did, you know, we did talk to epidemiologists at the Department of Public Health almost daily. It seemed like every other case that we had was not so clear-cut and needed some specific guidance that may have been a little like off the beaten path, but they were a great support to us. I think that, you know, we're all very familiar with the dashboard and the weekly updates and, you know, being vigilant to making sure that we were, you know, capturing every student that was out and the number of kids who were quarantining, which was tough for a lot of families because, you know, the whole situation of kids finally getting to come back to school in April, we still needed to quarantine kids at times. So the dashboard, the Health Services webpage, we have a Twitter page and our Facebook page. So our, anyway, and one of the things that we did do at the beginning of the school year, and I really want to thank Brian Byrne and Emily Goonan again, for the educational videos that we were doing. And just prevention education in terms of one of our major mitigation strategies, I think was really important. We were, Brian was able to share exactly how many hits we had on these videos. They weren't short either, they were like seven, eight minutes long, the last one was even longer. But just trying to look at certain, you know, different topics that we could talk to families about, and the nurses participated in these. And I feel like some of the families had given them positive feedback. We did have, you know, posted them on Facebook as well and on Twitter, and we did have, you know, quite a large number of views. This is one of like sort of a nice best practice. We're really fortunate to have some great nurses in the district who've done a lot of wonderful things. And one of our nurses, this is Judy Duarte at PCIS, who actually gave an interview on WBRA this past year. And those were the pictures they took of her when they came in to do the radio interview. And she was great. Judy, prior to coming to the district five years ago, was a, and has been a pediatric nurse practitioner for over 20 years in a local pediatric practice, and she's been amazing. So I think she really put a great perspective and, you know, tried to keep the level of fear down and talking about how we were addressing situations. Because when we all came back, we certainly didn't know what to expect. We had so much PPE, we had medical waiting rooms, and we were just not really sure of what was going to happen. So again, the COVID-specific collaborations, I can't say enough about Karen Keen, who is the Director of Public Health for the Town of Plymouth. She was very communicative. We would have an opportunity to have Zoom meetings with her and Barry Poffin from the Plymouth Board of Health. And it was great just to be able to, you know, and these are communications and collaborations that we did not normally have in other years. So that was, you know, amazing. Our school physician consultant, Dr. Rochan Hushmand from Cape Cod Pediatrics, was also amazing. She gave us some great perspective and was always available for us. The Mass Department of Public Health, of course, our state epidemiologists who were great. They would always call us back within like, you know, a half an hour. And then, of course, the Mass Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics was kept putting out guidance on different topics. And then our local pediatric practices that we've had longstanding, good relationships with. So that was very helpful. And of course, last but not least, the Department of Education. So thanking, and I really do want to mention specifically here, these are some of the collaborations that my nurses have had during the school year, which I think were great because, you know, it was all about COVID. We still managed to be able to, you know, work with some other agencies and organizations. Our new Plymouth Family Resource Center has been an amazing and will be an amazing asset to the community in Plymouth and also other communities in terms of the programmings that they offer and supports for families. I do really have to say that the Sunrise Rotary, I want to give a little bit of just commentary on their support. They have provided the nurses for three, three times with gift cards for Walmart to support families in need. We just got, received another, each nurse will be receiving another $150 gift card from Walmart. And these go a long way in terms of supporting kids and families. So it does lead to the school nurses' discretion on how it's spent. Every school has a different, you know, has different needs certainly at every level. So that has been great. And I also have to say too that the Plymouth Pediatric Practice has been also amazing because we need to be on the same page. I mean, these are the practices that are caring for our children and families, and we need to be able to be in close communication. And guidance would come out from different groups and, you know, we had to explain to them many times, well, this is what we have to do. We can't necessarily go by what the CDC is saying. So it was great to be able to improve and still, you know, take part in, you know, meetings with these groups. And One Health, I do have to mention because they were the saliva testing kits that we had, PCR testing kits, and they were, you know, certainly a great company to work with. And this is just an example of some of the kids who were being seen with some cardiac complications post-COVID, even kids who had not been ill. The guidance from the American Academy of Pediatrics asked that these kids, all before returning to sports or activity, be seen and evaluated by their primary care physicians. So Plymouth Pediatrics put something out, we collaborated with them, and then we also had our own guidance that we also shared with families, making sure that everybody was, you know, on the same page, that families were fully informed. And. Winding down. So this is just a quote from the former Surgeon General about you can't educate a child who is unhealthy. I mean, obviously, we all know this. It's always been a priority in the district, you know, the physical health of children. So I just think that's just sort of inappropriate. So I was thinking, this is a little bit of history that I wanted to share with everybody. And I actually am trying to remember the name of the superintendent. I can't, I don't know if you can see it up close, Peg, can you? This was. Charles something. Yeah, Charles Harris. So in talking about, like, you know, there was a flu pandemic in 1918 where kids were, schools were closed for months. It lasted about as long as COVID, maybe even a little longer. Schools in many cities were shut down, although at that particular time in the country, sanitation was so poor in a lot of the homes in some of the bigger cities like New Haven, New York, Chicago, the kids were safer in school. So I did look up on the town report for 1918. And this particular superintendent was in his sixth year, not his first, so he had a little bit more, you know, experience under his belt as superintendent. But this is amazing, like you can go into, the woman at the library was so helpful. You can go into the archives and everything is digitalized now. And it was amazing to me to see that in 1918, that they were actually collecting health data. So in the superintendent's initial pages of his report, they talked about over 2,000 children were screened for hearing and vision testing, which was then required by law in Massachusetts and still is. And that, you know, obviously they recognized then the impact on learning. So Susie McDonald is the nurse. She was actually on the very last page of the report, but she talked about the numbers of kids with contagious diseases that were contracted in the home versus in the school. They kept the kids out. You know, she talks about some of the other things, that they also had some issues with, you know, serious other infections and whatnot. But I thought it was really great that this was captured. The school physician that year was filling in for somebody else, and they talked about, you know, the physical health of kids and their mental wellbeing. So it's, it's, these are all, these town reports are really easy to find and I just thought it was a good comparison. They talked about, you know, keeping kids home and not letting them come to school if people in the home were sick. And some of the language in this, in this short report, the physician's report goes on to another page, was so similar to what we did and how we were handling it. So I just thought that was sort of a little, little data comparison, I guess, from back in the day. And what actually happened is, what they were doing in some of the cities is they were actually having the nurses and doctors examining the kids in school for the schools that kept kids in school.
That second thing. We just, Ms. Badger and I just noticed, and I think Ms. Hayward, we're all members of the Fragment Society, which is noticed, which is noted.
Oh, is it?
It started in 1818, and I'm the Vice President, Ms. Badger, and Ms. Hayward, we're all members of that, and we're still doing this every month. And it was just cool that we saw at the bottom, it says things were donated by the Fragment Society.
Oh, I know, I saw that one in the.
Yeah, so we are still, we're still doing it.
And they're so easy to find. I looked at like the 1920 report towards the end of the pandemic, and they didn't have really much about the health. I mean, things had probably been dying down. So I don't know that this was a common occurrence to cite health data other than maybe screenings in schools. But anyway, so just want to thank the entire administrative team who's been amazing. I think that obviously, starting with the superintendent and looking at all of the building principals and how closely they've worked with their nurses as COVID leads in their buildings. Tough situations every week, sending letters out. It just wasn't a popular topic when you have to let families know that there had been issues. And I think over time, people knew that we were working collaboratively together. So I just, from my vantage point, really appreciate Dr. Campbell and his administrative team for all of the work that they've done. And people have no idea how much work it's been. So I do have a little video to end this, that when you see my face, it's going to stop though. Because this is just, this is thank yous from the kids to the nurses.
I really appreciate the nurses here.
The nurses are really nice because they're kind, giving, caring, and they, and they care for other people more than them.
She is so kind and so helpful for the kids.
The nurses can help people get better if they're sick.
They're very supportive, they're very kind towards the, any people that go in there and any people in general.
They help us a lot and they're always there for us when we need them.
It makes me feel like I have like a safe place to go to whenever I'm in a state of I need someone or I need just support. It helps me a lot.
When I had a big stomach ache, she actually called my mom and dad and I felt way better.
I have diabetes and they've done a really, really good job at taking care of that. They always have everything that they need. If my blood sugar goes low, my blood sugar goes high, anything goes wrong, they have everything they need and they're very skilled in that. And I really appreciate the work that they do here.
I'm so happy that you're here and you're a nurse and you're helping everyone.
Thank you for being there for everyone and me. I really, I really enjoy and I'm thankful for your work you do at Mammoth School. I love you, bye.
Thank you, nurses, for helping everyone in need.
Happiness appreciation week.
Thank you, nurses.
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 Thank you, school nurses.
Thank you, school nurses.
Thank you for keeping all the same.
Okay, that's good. But you know, it was interesting because like although the numbers are different in terms of the numbers of visits and everything, and our concussion numbers are down, which is probably sports-related, we did have a significant number of 911 calls this year, pretty serious, physical and issues and obviously injuries, multiple fractures in the playgrounds. But I think that, you know, certainly, again, everything has, you know, the school year has come to a close and we're really grateful for that. And everybody has, you know, stayed healthy and hopefully ready to get back into learning in September.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments, Dr. Swanson?
Thank you, nurses.
Yeah.
I wish I had gotten you guys too. It was like a little, it was sometimes not always easy to get everybody on these.
Great presentation, a lot, very, very, very well done. We really appreciate everything you all do. I'm going to put you on the spot for a second though, because we have our students here. And I'm concerned about their vaccines. That group from 12 to 20. And I know you sent out plenty of communications about vaccine or vaccinations. Will we be encouraging our adolescents to get immunized?
So that was one thing I did omit. I should have talked a little bit more when we talked about the community collaboration piece. We did have, Harbor Health had reached out to us a while ago and were willing to partner with us as a school district specifically for the 12 and up ages of students to come. And they set literally two weeks of vaccine clinics just for Plymouth families. And I believe that we had about 275 kids receive their vaccines probably two weeks ago, maybe, I think. And, you know, and we can certainly, they have offered, we have another meeting with them tomorrow. They're, they're more than willing to continue the collaboration. And I think what was difficult is, especially with COVID testing in the beginning of the school year, I think we were hitting, you know, some roadblocks and being able to get our kids tested in a timely manner. Because you remember, it was like a week or more out before kids could be tested. And Harbor Health really wanted to help us do that, except that they were under specific constraints from the property management group over there that wouldn't let them do any testing on-site because they're building the new apartments and it was just not good PR, I guess, for that. So they were unable to offer that. But I think in general, you know, we tried to work with Brewster Ambulance. We had a lot of groups that were really trying really hard with the state, really feel bad with, you know, the first responder piece was great because the nurses were able, and health aides who also, who also I need to thank, who are amazing in terms of supporting the health offices. They were able because they were. in terms of supporting the health offices, they were able, because they were considered first responders, to be able to get the vaccine through the town. Um, but, you know, with the teachers, we tried everything to get, you know, something to work. And the state just really, um, made it difficult.
But I appreciate, I appreciate what you said about the, the adolescents. So towards the end of the summer and the beginning of the next year, we will be encouraging.
Oh, absolutely. And I think we, we can certainly continue to send out, um, you know, looking ahead to next year, you know, send out information. A lot of the pediatric practices also to where the kids go and see their primary care physician, um, have also been offering the vaccine. Um, so I think it's important for people to have access to care all around. I mean, and it's critical because we found that even with the, with the COVID testing in the beginning, some families like didn't have transportation. And we were transporting families to be able to get testing. So yeah, it's really tough. And I think that, um, I think the schools picked up a great slack in terms of supporting families being able to, you know, to get the care that they needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have, Ms. Badger?
I was just going to say thank you. I just think it's really important. I don't think we can say it enough for all the, the nurses and, you know, nurse aides and everybody did to keep our students safe and just, you know, walking us through each step. I think it was just, uh, a lot of work. And like you said, more than anyone will ever know how much work you all did. So thank you. Right. And I think one of the great things when the superintendent had started the chat committee, um, at the beginning of the year, I think that was important. There were like seven or eight nurses on that committee. And it was just great to be able to hear from everybody, you know, to hear from teachers and just to hear from different people who, with, you know, with concerns they had. Because although, you know, it did, it was funny, it mentioned in the nineteen eighteen report that teachers were doing the screenings on the kids. Um, and how the teachers were doing all they could do to keep the kids safe and in school. Um, and I think that can be said too for now. The teachers did have a lot on their plates. I mean, to have to teach a class on top of, you know, having to think about and worry about a lot about these other issues, I think was huge.
Anybody else have anything? Dr. Campbell?
Just briefly, um, I just want to say what's been said already, but I can't say it enough about how appreciative I am of your leadership, Carolyn, and, and the school nurses, every one of your nurses and health aides, um, for the just incredible work that they all did, that you all did, um, through this entire year and leading up to this year. I think, um, none of us really knew what we were dealing with, right? It's a, it's a novel virus. We didn't know what we were dealing with. And I think that everyone did just a remarkable job in keeping our building safe, but also reassuring families, staff, and students about, um, just how safe they were in our school. So, and I, and I know I've saw the volumes of paper for all the contact tracing and the communications and it's just, um, that's a big weight to have on your shoulders.
Texting you every day, how many cases to report to the Department of Education.
But a big weight, I think, on, you know, every nurse to, to have that responsibility, but to do it and to do it with, um, just, just amazing, amazing dedication. So just want to thank you.
Thanks. And I think I know that you appreciate them, so.
Ms. Hayward?
It's always good to have a nurse on school.
I know, right?
Um, so yes, from my fellow nurse, um, I just want to say thank you. I know that especially during the pandemic, um, several, um, communities, several districts, including our own, leaned on school nursing in, in terms of, um, assisting, um, and even, um, more so than assisting than actually, um, providing the information, um, needed when we didn't have, um, particular people in place, um, in terms of, um, having that background. So, um, thank you so much for the work that you did.
And it is hard, I think, when you're not in the trenches. And I feel like the, the, the times I had the opportunity to be in some of the schools this year, especially the elementary schools, doing the absenteeism calls back to families and having families share that they were, their children were home remote in the beginning, and then they saw what a great job the district was doing. And I think that was great to hear the positive reinforcement from the families, myself directly back, and how just impressed they were on all of the district was doing. And the more research they did and the more they saw on how transparent Plymouth was. Um, complete, you know, compared to a lot of other districts, I think that was really important too, so.
And I, I think about it once again, um, I was just recently, um, my son's eye appointment and I, um, and as the otomologist is saying, you know, he was born with this, uh, you know, astigmatism that was not picked up until he went to kindergarten in the schools.
And we actually, I will, I will be happy to say my elementary nurses, because we have some equipment that we can test with distancing, that's very quick. It's high state-of-the-art equipment. We were able to do vision testing on all of our elementary kids and found a significant, again, number of kids with some, some major vision, visual issues that had not been screened out at their pediatrician's appointment. So that was something I think that was important, just trying to do some of the normal stuff that we've done. It's important that, you know, impact learning. So.
And I, oh.
I just wanted to say, I was one of those families that started remote and then went hybrid and then eventually full-time because I saw all the good work that you were doing. And I wasn't sure what to expect, and so I held my daughter back. But because of how well everybody handled everything, I can't say thank you enough because I dotted every I and crossed every T before I sent her back. And if you hadn't have done all the work you did, you know, it definitely shows.
Yeah, and I, but I think it was helpful too that in this, in this district that we have, I think there's always been a really good, strong administrative, you know, like, you just philosophy to support staff who then support the kids. And it's a trickle-down effect. And I think that played into this whole situation too.
It was just everybody handled it flawlessly.
Right. That's good to hear. And we only, like, when you think about it, we did only have less than seven percent of our population ever become positive. So even though that's seven percent, it's, some people may think that's a lot. I think it does speak to the vigilance in the, in the district in terms, in terms of the work that was done by facilities, by everybody. I mean, just to keep things clean and, um, thank you for the opportunity.
I echo what everybody said too. And I know that, um, I come from a family of nurses and, you know, my daughter's on her way as well. But I know that, um, the school nurses are just so much more than that too. When my daughter was in elementary school, I think the school nurse, Nurse Susan, was her best friend. She was what they called a frequent flyer. And I, I think that it must have been extremely tough for those kids that know that they can go down and have a friend in the nurse's office and having to do this remote that, that was missing. But it looks like you guys still, um, were able to, to touch those kids. And, and like I said, sometimes it's more than just a medical issue. You guys are there and you're there. You're a constant, if, you know, for the time that they're in that school. So thank you to everybody.
Oh, sure. And I think one of the good things this year that stayed constant with numbers is that our return to class rate stayed at ninety-five percent. Actually, it was ninety-six percent this year. So that was, again, that's why nurses are in schools, to get kids back to class. So.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you, guys. I think, appreciate it.
All right. Okay, next up we have our policy adoption. The retention and promotion policy that we talked about the last meeting. So Dr. Rogers, do you want to preface this?
Yep. So we had talked about this at our last meeting. So this, we're just revisiting just a couple of, a couple of tweaks that we made. Um, I, I was reading this through again, and I just, so this red, red sentence sort of stuck out to me as a little bit maybe overbearing for something that we might want to have in a policy, in a policy. So I wanted to just run that by the committee, um, and get their opinion on that one particular sentence. And then the last part was sort of what we had talked about the last time was kind of sha- a shared responsibility between the student and, and the staff. And I thought Dr. Sorensen made a, a really good point when we were kind of going back and forth and email that a lot of our graduating seniors are already eighteen years of age. So, um, I think they need to share a little bit more of a burden than if they were maybe a little bit younger. So those are the two sort of revisions from last time.
Okay. Does anybody have any, any?
Well, I would just say, I support your sentence. That retention is not remediation. I said that the last meeting. I'm glad you put it in there.
Yeah, it looks good to me too. Anybody else have anything that they want to add or question? All right. Are we, um, are we using? Okay. And of course, I can't get back to it. We're going to use it, but I'm not in it.
Escape.
Yeah, I just hit escape. It's not working. Okay, hold on one. Sorry, guys. I have the document open and I can't get back to the main page. You know what? Hold on.
It's really weird.
I know. There we go. Just minimize it. All right. So this is an action item. So we are going to use electronic school board. And if everyone will go ahead and, oh, I'm sorry. I'm so excited because this is the first time I'm, I'm using electronic school board. Do I have a motion? Ms. Badger?
We approve, um, the new policy retention and promotion.
Thank you. Any second, Mr. Pizano? Any more discussion on it? All right, great. So we'll go ahead and take a vote. Oh, there it is. Yay. I know. Like Jeopardy. Should we play the theme song? Well, no, I mean, it's, it's, I'm still waiting for two people, right? Yeah. Okay. Help Luis down. I'm sorry?
I don't have voting at the top.
Oh, you don't?
You have to click on the actual, um,
Yeah. Try join meeting. Or sync it.
You have to be on the seven point one.
Oh, on the agenda. There it is.
There you go. Great. All right. So it's unanimous, seven in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our district, uh, update for COVID nineteen. Dr. Campbell?
The last dashboard was posted on Friday. Excuse me. No confirmed cases. Um, unfortunately, we had one quarantine on the dashboard, a student quarantine for out, out of school exposure, um, that continued. We was hoping to have all zeros down the board, but we didn't. But, um, happy to see that, you know, things are much, much better, not only in the schools, but in the community at large. So, in addition to that, just, uh, for the public's sake, and I know that the school committee knows this, in terms of COVID mask guidance from the Department of Education. So for summer programs now, masking indoors is not required, but it's encouraged. So DESI's summer guidance is in line with the state guidance, encouraging unvaccinated individuals to continue to mask, but it's not mandatory. Uh, Dr. Rogers communicated this to all of our summer employees and our le- summer leadership, and we're communicating that out to all families as well. So that's an update regarding that. Now regarding the fall, we did have a call with the commissioner last Wednesday, I think it was. Um, so at this time, all health and safety guidance, including masking and physical distancing, will be lifted for the coming school year. Uh, DESI will continue to collaborate with the Department of Public Health, uh, to issue any additional health and safety recommendations, uh, over the summer, should they become necessary. But at this time, everything is being lifted for the fall. So that's what I have, uh, for my update regarding, uh, COVID.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Campbell? All right. Next, your superintendent's part.
Thank you. So, uh, last week was, uh, was really full of a lot of end of year celebrations and field days and, um, just a wonderful opportunity to celebrate, um, what was overall a very successful year, considering, I just want to thank, um, everyone. Um, all of you, our my administrative team, our principals, our teachers, our nurses, um, our, our students and their families and just everyone who works for us for just tremendous patience, I think, this year. But, um, just, just significant understanding and support, uh, that, that everyone has shown me and shown all of us who, who work really hard to, to keep our schools open, keep them safe, and to educate our kids. So I'm just really thankful for that. Um, so I wanted to say that. Last week, uh, we made, there was, uh, was a, a report that was highlighted. I know it was in, uh, the Patriot Ledger regarding student discipline. Um, and disproportionate number of students by race, race, ethnicity, and disability, um, that had been highlighted, uh, in the Plymouth schools and, and other districts as well. This is something that has been, um, on our radar since twenty seventeen with the Department of Education. Um, we've had a disproportionate higher number of students in certain races, as well as students with disabilities, uh, since two thousand seventeen. So while we've shown improvement over the course of the last few years, we have, uh, we continue to be working with the Department of Education on education support, looking at our policies, looking at our practices, um, working with the Rethinking Discipline Team of the Department of Education. Dr. Rogers has been heavily involved in that, uh, with our administrators. So this is something that we continue to work on. Um, we also work with the Department of Education to develop school and district goals in relation to this. So we're looking at our policies, our practices, as well as professional development. So, um, I know that this was presented at the, um, our diversity committee meeting, uh, just last week. Uh, this is something that we continue to work on. Um, it's not work I think that's ever over, but, uh, certainly where it was highlighted. Um, after, you know, it's been a few years, uh, since we, this work was initiated, but I just wanted to, um, bring that up this evening to, to discuss that. Um, another thing that I wanted to bring up, um, that has been brought, before the select board recently was the air quality, air in our schools. I know that many of the committee members here know that, um, this concern was brought before the select board, uh, particularly in our older buildings where, um, we don't have central air. So we, um, for the public's sake and for, for those who don't know, we have four schools that that don't have, uh, central air. Nathaniel Morton, Cold Spring, Hedge, and a good portion of Manomet Elementary. And when we get some of these hot days, particularly in June and sometimes in early September, um, it can get really uncomfortable. Uh, we've tried to, you know, mediate that, mitigate that in various ways, um, over the years. This has been an issue since I've been here. Certainly in terms of the discomfort in some years are better than others, but we definitely have several days, um, either at, at the end of the year or beginning of the year or both, um, where it can get quite uncomfortable. My own children went to one of the schools. It can get quite uncomfortable. Um, some of them are better than others in terms of sea breeze and air exchange. We've done some things to mitigate it, such as, as I said, such as, um, increased fans. Um, but this is something that we need to continue to look at. Um, I have several concerns, honestly, regarding our older buildings. Um, Hedge Elementary, I believe, is a hundred eleven years old. Part of Nathaniel Morton is over a hundred years old. The front of the, the new part of Nathaniel Morton was built in nineteen thirty-two. So we have buildings that are old, but we really, you know, we need these buildings operating. And there's a lot of, um, I think, structural things that we need to look at. We just need to be, in addition to the air quality, there are some things that we're going to have to consider as we look at capital projects. Um, I asked Christina Renaud, our Director of Facilities, to get me a very rough estimate. Again, this is very, very rough. Um, of what it would cost to condition the air in these older schools. Like what would, I mean, in, in most cases, you'd look at split units. Split units are the ones that can go on the walls. You don't need the ductwork. Um, probably something that we couldn't do at Nathaniel Morton, just because of the way that it's, that it's designed. But, uh, for the sake of this exercise, just to let the committee know that, um, without including costs for asbestos, lead abatement, or any other ADA compliance, that issues that would most likely be triggered during a project like this, um, were at almost eight million dollars. And that does not include project management. It doesn't include certain things. So it's probably closer to ten million dollars, uh, for those four schools. Uh, we do have some funding, uh, federal funding that can go towards the air quality remediation, but we certainly don't have dollars like that that could, that could go anywhere near enough tackling all of those projects. So, um, we know that we're not going to get new construction anytime soon. We just built two wonderful high schools. So like I said, we really need to invest in these buildings. Nathaniel Morton houses upwards of six hundred students since I've been here at, at some times. You all know that, um, town meeting approved a capital project to evaluate all of our buildings this year. So in July, we're actually going to be assessing all of our facilities from top to bottom. So we'll get a really good current handle on exactly what we're dealing with when it comes to roofs, anything that's going to be significant enough, whether it was painting or any, any, any issue that we may have in all of our buildings. And I think this is timely data that we really need to look at. But again, particularly with our older buildings. Um, so that audit will, will help us a lot. Uh, coincidentally, um, and not related to the, the discussion about the air, but, um, I am recommending that we do a redistrict exercise in the fall. the, the discussion about the air, but, um, I am recommending that we do a redistricting exercise in the fall. Um, our elementary enrollment is down by fourteen and a half percent over the last ten years. We've seen fluctuations from school to school. Some have gone up, some have gone down. We haven't done a redistricting exercise since two thousand ten, I believe it was, before we opened North, Plymouth North High School. And at that time, we did, um, it was really, um, looking at our high schools, and we did some adjustments at the middle schools and fifth grade, um, at, um, Indian Brook that used to go to two different middle schools, and then they went to South High School. We were able to fix that back then, but we haven't looked at it since then. So it was, this happened to be something that I had on, um, sort of my list for goals for next year anyways. Um, I think we need to just be very responsible about looking at all of our resources and how we're uh, utilizing the resources of our district. So in, in addition to the facilities, looking at where our district boundaries lie and coming up with some good recommendations in the fall, uh, regarding that. So I wanted to bring that to your attention well, as well. Um, but we will, as I said, the, the, the air is an issue, and I think we need to, um, see what we can do, but it will cost a significant amount of money if we're going to entertain something like that.
All right. Ms. Badger?
Did you have a question?
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I understand the, um, older schools. Um, there was a question of some uneven ventilation at, um, North, and I didn't know if that was addressed where some parts of the schools were sixty and the other parts.
Sure, yeah. So we, we're constantly looking at that. We do have, we have, we have HVAC technicians. I see some head nodding over there from our students. I think the air, right, and having kids have gone there, the third floor sometimes can, can get really warm. And so we've done adjustments. Even this, when Christina first came on, Ms. Renaud first came on, we had an issue at North High School. And we had, you may recall that we ended up purchasing, I think, about sixty fans for a certain section of the building. You probably had some classes in some of those areas, but we had, we had to, we had to wait for some parts then to, for the fans, because the fans weren't getting the air through the system. So we're always um, addressing issues with that. And we've had, we had a couple of other issues. We had an issue at South Middle School recently. We had an issue at P C I S. So these are, this is why we have the HVAC technicians. It's really important because issues will come up. Um, but yes, I'm, we're always concerned about those as well. And they're very sophisticated systems, um, in these newer buildings. So we want to make sure that they're, they're operating to the, you know, full capacity.
Ms. Badger, did you have a question? And then Ms. Jackson? Okay.
I was just going to ask, and with the air quality, um, and the funding, is that something that we would consider using, like, the one-time federal infusion of funds for, to improve so it wasn't coming out of the regular budget, or something we could consider using some of that money for?
Yeah, um, we, we certainly could. I don't know how much money we will be able to utilize towards that, but certainly I would suggest, you know, in, initiating something that we, you know, depending on how much money we're talking about.
Mr. Pizano?
Yeah, just to follow to Ms. Jackson's, yeah, I know, just, uh, ring the bell in my head that, uh, Representative Moratori actually, you know, mentioned additional potential one-time dollars from the, from the county. I mean, that's, I mean, start looking at what's in each of these buckets. Maybe, you know, I don't know how much, you know, if they're talking millions or not, but.
Yeah, we, we'll be looking at every single dime that comes through.
So we will copy them on the, um, email that they just, they asked if we sent a request in for those funds to copy.
Yeah, maybe, maybe good to understand what's even available there. Is it, you know?
And for what purpose?
Air quality is COVID-related.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So I mean, this, this could be, you know, millions.
We were, we were actually just kind of saying the same thing, that that's, the light bulb went off. Anybody, Dr. Sorenson?
On the other topic, the redistricting topic, two very bold undertakings. Glad to hear it. Uh, the techni, the software now, from what I understand, is very, very highly, uh, technical, not technical, accurate.
Yes.
We can locate a student in a, in a house, on a street, with siblings, so we know exactly where all our students are.
Yes.
Redistricting should be much, much more exact science this time around. I'm looking forward to seeing those results.
Oh, for sure. And, you know, we need to look at new growth, and we need to look at, um, programs that exist in our schools and, and also, like you said, the census data and knowing where those children reside. It's, it's much more sophisticated now in terms of the software, so.
Ms. Mary? So you're, you're doing the exercise preemptively.
Yes.
Okay, prior to, because I know that it would be towards the end of the year that they would make their determination. They're having hearings now regarding redistricting within, um, the Commonwealth.
Oh, no. The school distribution.
I see, I see, I see.
But that's a, that's a big deal too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I didn't know if it came in, like.
Well, I don't, I don't think it would affect the precincts.
No, not precincting. It's. Yeah, the overall, yeah.
All right, Ms. Badger?
Just repeat that. We didn't, we couldn't hear.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, it's too separate. So they're talking redistricting in terms of the student pop, and I was mentioning redistricting in terms of this, like, the Euroball community. Which is essentially coming at the same time. Yes.
All right, anybody else have anything else? All right, thank you.
Let's add on real quick then. We're planning on giving you guys a S R two and three update in July. So we'll give you a more detailed overview of our budget and what may be available for some of these projects.
Yeah, we should know more. Thank you for bringing that up. We'll, we'll know more by the July twelfth meeting regarding that. And while we won't have a commitment for all the dollars, I think we want to, as we've learned, I think, from the state this past year, there are some things that until we have all the information in terms of what our obligations are, um, but we'll have a better sense of what, what funding is available, for sure. Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you for the update. Um, next we have retirement announcements. Mr. Chovey?
Dr. Campbell talked about some end of year celebrations, so we get to speak of some end of career celebrations. Uh, we have four new retirements for you this evening. Christine Hoffer, who is a para educator with the Intensive Learning Center. Uh, for thirteen years, she'll be retiring on June the twelfth. Kathleen Nie is our Technology Service Secretary, worked district-wide for the past fourteen years. Uh, she'll be going out on July twenty-third. Mary Beatson, who's a Special Education Clerical Secretary with fourteen years as well at Nathaniel Morton, uh, she'll be retiring on August the fifteenth. And Kelly Bentoncourt, a sixth grade classroom teacher for twenty years at Plymouth South Middle School, will effectively retire on August the twentieth.
All right. Ms. Badger?
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I just want to, um, I just want to thank these four individuals for their combined sixty-one years of service to the district and wish them a happy retirement.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have, um, letters. I think that we have one letter, Ms. Morgan?
Yes, um, we have, uh, one piece of correspondence tonight. It's a letter of commendation and appreciation for Superintendent Dr. Campbell, written, submitted by the district's, um, Director of School Health Services, Carolyn Rains. And I really don't need to say anymore because she pretty much read the letter when she commented you. So, um, that's the correspondence for this evening.
Thank you. All right, committee member reports. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to report? So far for the committees, Ms. Badger?
We had our last collaborative meeting of the year on Thursday night, and, um, uh, we're doing really well, and we're really excited to see students coming back to the district so that we can start seeing some of the students trickling into the collaborative so that we can continue to help those students. Um, we're also, there's, we're working on some of our, our prices. We, prices for service have been, have been increased, but not by a whole lot, but enough so that we're a little bit more competitive than we were before. The collaborative itself was pretty low in the prices that it charged overall, and so we, we, um, supported an increase in all of that. Um, and I know I mentioned that they were starting a, a student government organization, and they officially are up. We passed it. And so now they're going to be working on all of their, um, the, the supporting documentation and the roles and everything like that. So it'll be really nice to see that underway. Um, but we don't have our next meeting until October. That's it. Um, and, oh, I forgot, I have one more. Sorry. And then I had the opportunity, thank you to Mrs. Frye, um, to go to the Plymouth South Underclassmen Awards. And it was just really lovely to be in a building again, at an event again. I think it was the first one I was able to go to. Um, and I only went because I, my, my school does a book award, so that's why I was invited. Um, but yeah, it was a lot of fun to be back and see all the students.
Any other committee members have anything to report? Dr. Sorenson?
Uh, we had our last sick leave bank meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago. We meet seven-thirty in the morning on Wednesday mornings of the beginning of the month. Uh, Mr. Chovey, uh, represents the central office there, does a magnificently good job in keeping us appraised. Ms. Frye did it before that. Mr. Chovey, would you read into the record the two names of our committee members who I, who, who join us every Wednesday morning?
Uh, it's Kim Cameron and Katousa Lorenzo.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is a great, this is a great, uh, sick leave bank. We had a very difficult year because of COVID, and, uh, we're ready to go again.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have anything? I just have one thing. I attended, um, National School Board Association's Advocacy Institute last week. Um, uh, and I, I know that I discussed a little bit with Dr. Campbell. The majority of the conversation was about the homework gap and, you know, students not having access to the internet. Um, so I have a lot of data and research on that that I can share, and, you know, maybe in an email, but, because it's, but that seems to be, you know, usually there's one heavy-hitting topic, and that, that was almost a whole day's discussion. So it was, it was good. It was good to be there. I know that our delegation did not, um, on the last day, we were meeting with legislators, and we didn't because I think the, um, the officers of Massachusetts Associations of School Committees have a good relationship with our legislators, just like we do, and they realized it would be more effective for us to talk to them in district rather than participate in that. But it was, it was, it's always been my favorite thing to go to. It, it, it still was a pretty phenomenal event, considering we didn't get a chance to go and actually participate in person. So that's it for me. And next up, we have PYDC. Do we have, oh, yes, yay, your first committee report.
Yes. Um, so I'm, Mr. Pizano and myself are going to be meeting with Kelly, um, in July, so she's going to give me more of a background on PYDC then. It was mostly a review of the last year. Um, they are adding Wareham to their cluster and looking forward as the new year goes ahead to, um, promote more health equity for underserved populations, as well as continuing their partnerships. Um, the sticker shock campaign that they had was the most successful for, um, for any campaign with all thirty-seven liquor stores in the cluster participating in their sticker shock campaign. So that was great. Um, they have a couple of events coming up. One was a Middle Borough kickoff today. Um, Carver is having an open house on July sixth, and then they will be at the Plymouth Arts and Crafts Festival on August eighth. Um, and the only other thing that came up that I thought we might be able to help with is that Plymouth right now doesn't have a consistent group of volunteers. Um, they sort of draw from groups that are, um, that are like-minded. So we did talk about that being maybe one of their goals going forward, because it has always sort of been a goal. And maybe we could help put together a formal group.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have, um, building committee report.
Um, this month's meeting was canceled. Uh, so we're scheduled to meet, um, on July eighth, I believe. And I'm actually on vacation, so Mr. Pizano will, uh, will take the notes for that meeting, unless I get postponed again too.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. Okay, personnel reports. Back to you, Mr. Chovey.
Yes, um, this evening we have seven certificated appointments for you, uh, three classified appointments. We have accepted one short-term parental leave, and then there are six resignations that we have accepted.
Great. Thank you. And old business. Does anybody have anything to address for old business? How about new business? And just to let the students know too, if you ever want to bring anything before new business, just let us, let us know. All right. So next we have the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that they need to remove from the consent agenda? I can't say consent right today. Okay. All right. So we will go ahead and take a motion. Mr. Morgan?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Oh, and seconded by Dr. Sorenson. Any discussion? Uh, Ms. Badger?
I just have one that I, there was a very tiny change that, um, Ms. Grimes has already made. It was literally just to, um, put a space between two words. So it's really small.
All right. So we'll go ahead and do our vote. If everyone will just go ahead. I know. We're used to this, aren't we? So much easier than me and butchering everybody's names. I've known them for years. Great. So everyone voted in favor? Um, and we are, that is approved, and it is eight forty-two, and the meeting of the Plymouth School Committee is adjourned. Great.